So if everyone will please stand for our prayer and pleasure of the allegiance to God, and to the Lord, and to our invitation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for bringing us out tonight, Lord. We thank you for watching over our county. We just are blessed to be here together, Lord. We just pray that all that we do and say may be recorded with your will. And we just ask you to look over our proceedings. And Lord, we thank you for this great state, for this great nation. And Lord, we know that you protect it all the time. And Lord, we thank you for that. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the Red Bull meeting of the Gay County Commissioners for number eighteen. That's moved to five to nineteen to order. This being the second meeting of the month, there is no minutes to approve. At this time, I will present the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Yes, under administrative reports, I might add buildings and grounds as a report.
Buildings and grounds. So that would be not put as room number one, I mean just number one under room number five. Okay. Is that all? Here are the...
Let me check. Room number ten.
Yes.
Three, four, five, and six are listed. Can you clarify which ones were we going into? I would like to request five and six.
Five and six. I don't know what they would be, but anyway, we can...
I do not have anything for number four.
Or three.
No. For Lee and Lori, economic development.
Okay, so you have something for both number five and six?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are you making that in form of a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion that it's intended to be approved.
Okay, that add on the close session?
With close session, including five and six.
Okay, real estate and personnel. Okay, do I have second?
I'll second the motion, ma'am, chairman.
Motion is made, second. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, you made an amendment to the agenda. We want to include all of that.
Yes. It includes adding on to an administrative report and also the information under room number ten. Okay, here are no discussions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, first item on the agenda is delegation. No, not delegations, undenied delegations. Okay, first one up, Earl Rantry. Send me the name and address.
Think I've done this before. Earl Rantry, two, two, six, Folly Road, somewhere in Old Carolina, two, seven, nine, seven, nine. I'm not really, don't have much of a speech, but I have something that I figure is important. Rather than to try to call you up individually, I thought I would come by and speak to all of you. My first part of this is that we all know, you know more than anybody, but about we had a problem with budget this year. Very open, everybody knows it. And that's not the end of it, because we've got budgets coming up every year. And there's gonna be a lot of work that has to be done. But one thing that has bothered me is, well, I won't say bothered me, but I wanted to make a point, is that at this point on, we need to move forward. What has happened, has happened. We don't want it to happen again. It probably never will happen again. And it's up to you commissioners and the county manager to come up with a solution, but let's move forward. All of us made mistakes. There was a mistake made. I don't know who made the mistake. I don't know how it got through mistakes. But we have people that are on the board, the social services board, some of the commissioners. They didn't know it. It got through. And I'm really convinced that the worst day of Natalie Rantry's life was the day that she was told this. And it's not anything to do with Natalie. She's the head. As Harry Truman's famous sign says, "The bug stops here." Well, that's not exactly true in government. It stops there and it stops with y'all. You didn't know it, she didn't know it, I didn't even tell her. The reason I'm here is the fact that as I get phone calls and messages and hear from the county, there are some people that thought that somebody ought to be removed from office maybe because of what happened. I put on Facebook today, but I didn't do it. I was gonna bring each one of you a stone and put it in front of your podium here tonight. And I want any one of you, any of you that has never made a mistake in their life, never made a mistake, I want you to throw the stone. Because I am convinced that you've made mistakes. And I don't think any of you want to punish someone because they made a mistake. And one quick mistake that Jack Orson may not remember, but it was when he had insurance. I bought Netflix at three dollars a share. And it went to seven dollars a share and I sold it. If I'd have kept the shares that I'd had, it would have been over a million and a half dollars today. Now, that's a mistake.
I kept mine.
But I had a call the day at three o'clock. I was on the road. And this man had been upset because at some point in time, the county manager didn't do something that he wanted done. And after he finished his speech, he was upset with me, Jack, because I didn't agree with him. Because he called and thought I was going to agree with him. And I told him, no. I said, you know, he wanted something about the commissioners and all. I said, you should have called Linda Hoffler. She's the chairman. But we all make mistakes. Being a county manager, being anywhere is a tough job. I don't know why anybody wants to be a city of county manager. And you know, they just must have something really, some kind of wrong with them. And I'm not speaking of Natalie so much, but the one that some of you that I know, anybody, is a city manager of Lisbon City, Mr. Olson. And I think Linda probably keeps up with him as much. I mean, he is on the controversy all the time. And he's doing a good job. He's trying to keep the city from going broke. And he has to fight them council on. And the other day, I met, I was Gay County native, Bill Morgan, who's the city attorney. We were in Food Line. And I said, Bill, why do you want that job as city attorney? And he just laughed and walked on. But I want y'all to be careful of what you wish for. And when I say that is, think hard about any decisions that you may make that will affect this county and affect other people's lives. And don't do it because you've got some grievance, but do it only from the standpoint of what is best for the county and what is best for everyone. I want to close by saying this about our county manager, Natalie Rantry. And I was told this by an outside source sometime, sometime back then. I find that reason I can't talk, Jack, and my heart give out on that. And that seems strange, but anyway. I've been involved in state and local governments, especially state and federal. But state government, no one, and my time's up, and I'm not quitting today. That is, well, the two branches of government I really knew about was the Department of Transportation and the Department of Alcools. But there's people on staff up there, and their only job is, is to BS the public. And then they hire people just to do this. And if Jack Orson calls up with a complaint, they'll talk to him for about thirty minutes. And when Jack gets off the phone, he's gonna say, what did that man tell me? I know these people. Well, there's county managers out there that have been around a long time. And someone comes into their office and they, the newspaper or citizen, and they sit down, they talk to them for thirty minutes, and they leave, and they get home, and they realize, well, I don't know what she said, but I don't think she solved the problem. But I'm gonna close with this. I have never asked Natalie Rantry a question that she didn't either have the answer or get back to me, and she's sitting there, sitting there and talked to me, and I'll BSing her. Thank you.
Thank you. Lulu Yuor.
Good evening. The first question I have is, when you have community center discussion further down, will we be able to say anything, or is that gonna be just y'all discussing?
It's generally just...
Just gonna be just us discussing.
Well, my, my thing is...
Is the second option to public to talk at the end of the meeting?
Well, my thing is that I understand that the basic line is y'all wanna take the community center back over. You're trying to say it in the way of you want a senior center, and I don't think that's true. But for forty-one years, it has worked the way it is, and most of you have not helped us. We have done it without the help of commissioners all the way through. Ball fields, everything. And I, I take it personally that nobody even had the respect to even call and say, look, we're thinking about doing this. Now, I know, you know, Linda, how, what it looked like when you coached. And then I hear that my employees will have to reapply for jobs when it changes. I don't know if that's true or not. But we've come a long way, and it works. And I have gone to other places and talked about how it works, being the way it is between school and county. And I don't understand why y'all feel the need so much to try to change it now, after it's worked. I just don't think it's very fair to the employees, to the people of the county, to the people that work so hard on making it what it is, to turn around just because, damn, you wanna say, oh, we wanna take it over. And I just don't think that's very good. I want it on record that that is, to me, a major mistake that y'all committed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Vanessa Prum.
Can I speak at the end with some...
Yes. Is that...
I'll move it to the end.
Just move it to the end?
Yes, I was gonna address number fifteen.
Okay. Okay, does anyone else would like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll move on, when? To the administrative reports, mayor of, I believe we've asked building and rights.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of... I'm here on behalf of a situation that has arisen here at the courthouse with our separate tanks. For five thousand dollar tank, right now, we have excess water that has started coming into the tank, filling it up, causing us to have to have it pumped out at least once in two weeks. And it can be very expensive. And in my findings on today, we called Plummer, Nixon Plummer, and he came out with a light, coming with his cap. And so far, we still have not found a problem other than it's some pipes that's real old and cast out. This unfortunately, on the slab of this building has bellies pulled in which holds excess water. So what you're thinking is, it's holding the water and causing the extra excess to go through once you flush and all of that, and it causes that to be like a overflow. But it has been seen that it's several bellies. And the solution, well, one of the solutions that the Plummer has suggested that we not shut the whole building down because it has to operate. But we're gonna take one bathroom at a time, starting on Thursday. We're gonna do it from Wednesday through to quarter. But on Thursday, we're gonna come in and we're gonna shut one toilet down and put diet in. And then that way, we can find out exactly what's going on. That was one of the major suggestions that Plummer had told us. So we kinda like get something on that, you know. Hopefully, it's not that drastic, where we have to come in here and cut up concrete and all that stuff. Because the only problem here is, if it was just a water leak or something, we could cut it off and bypass it and re, you know, replumb. Fortunately, we can't do the same tank system like that, pipes like that. And once we get this going Thursday, I'll keep y'all updated on what, you know, what the progress, what we're gonna have to face. And hopefully, it won't be as bad as you know, completely.
And of course, you had your cost estimates.
Well, it's very expensive to get the plumber out with the county. That runs us like an hour, two hours, it's like four hundred and twenty dollars, which I had wanted to put in my budget to buy this camera, because we do have, I do have a maintenance man that can run that camera and use same thing as the plumber. And he does not have to be licensed to run, you know, a camera or whatever. So, and that's two thousand something dollars. Which I think it will be a savings to us if we go out and buy the camera. So when we have these issues, we won't have to pay Nixon Plummer or whoever to come out and bring that camera and charge us four hundred and something for two hours. But like I said, hopefully, Thursday, we kinda like get, you know, some kind of clue to what's exactly going on. And this is what happened, we got all the pipes.
And I would want, do you have, I know you have money, some money in your budget that you don't have. You probably, if it's a major plumbing issue, you probably don't have enough to cover it?
Probably not. But right now, like I said, right now, I'm gathering, you know, estimates and stuff like that. But I can't gather none of that stuff until we actually figure out what's going on. And we're gonna start with the diet on Thursday.
Thank you for keeping us and keep us informed. Any questions anybody has for Chris. Okay, there are no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to number seven. Our business and that is the community center.
Sorry.
Community center. Discussion about community center. Would you like to start, Madam?
There have been several emails asking about what we're going to do. And we, the commissioners need to decide the direction. I know that some of the discussion had been about seeing if components of a senior center could be added to the community center. Does it need to remain just a community center with youth programming focus? Or are there other options that the commissioners wished to pursue? The part of grant staff that they're willing to work with us if the county decides to take over the community center, as long as it, focus of it remains youth programming and youth recreation. But before anything can be done, one way or the other, commissioners need to decide what sort of program they wish to see if the county takes it back under their responsibility.
Okay, and so that is kind of what we need to give us the direction tonight.
Correct. Or if it's going to stay solely youth programming, if they want the school to continue maintaining and operating as it has been.
Dr. Williams has indicated he is willing to turn it back in.
That's what he has indicated, that he is willing to turn it over if the county wishes to take the responsibility.
Why is the pleasure of the board?
Well, I know it was a little bit of research done, and we want to view counties in our area that the county doesn't control. I think that's right, that Board of Education does not control it in the other areas.
Community center is correct.
Right. And part of our conversation, we talked about, you know, trying to be cost effective. Would it be more cost effective to do it with the county being in control of it, knowing that we're looking for every opportunity to save some, some dollars? So really, that's as far as we really got to talk about it.
I just got a lot of rumors out there, but that's, we, we, that was, we have not really deviated with it.
Not at all, really. It's just, we said everything's on the table, and here we are. And there, there has been some conversation, you know, trying to address, knowing that we can't address because we've looked financially at senior center. We've had quite a few folks come here and talk about the senior center. So what we did in regard to that, Natalie, I think you'll remember this. We, this board individually and somewhat as a group have said, how about this facility, how about this facility, how about this location, how about? And we looked at all the possibilities, trying to, to get ahead on the senior center idea, you know, rather than just shut the book and say, we're never having a senior center. We took a proactive approach and said, you know, how about all, how about this facility? We eliminated some. As a matter of fact, we took a little tour the other day, not specifically looking for a senior center, but those types of conversations came up while we were looking. And, and we did that as a group. But Ms. Yuor had said about as much at the podium tonight as we've said about it, other than just, you know, what are the, what are the opportunities? I guess the best thing to say about it, if anybody else has anything to add to this, is that we are looking with a big box, and outside that box, what's best for the county? You know, can it help the county to do it a different way, cost wise? And to get the maximum use out of the facility at the community center. But in doing that, that's when it came up that we were the only county that the school controlled. I don't say the only one, but it might be the only one. If not, we're, we're in a small, small group according to that. And that's really more than I've said about it altogether since the conversation. But I did want to get that out there to let the public know that, that we didn't close the door on the senior center, for that matter, and that's sort of, Ms. Yuor, that's sort of how this came about. Somebody want to add anything to that?
Well, don't look like I can add anything to it, because we really have talked about it. I certainly appreciate what Lulu brought to the table tonight. I think that because the county manager's always done a good job in bringing us the wherefores of whatever situation is, and I think the opportunity for everybody to talk about it, the school, Board of Education, of course, and superintendent, but certainly Lulu. And then I think we should, you know, as we do, it's our job to make decisions is to look at the pitfalls and see what the pitfalls are versus what the, what the good things are about. That doesn't really say anything, but that's where we are at this point.
And I, yeah, I don't think any of us, we have a firm vision, like what it's going to be, but looking for potentials.
Yes, ma'am. And I think Lulu had a hand up, but I don't look at that as protocol or not, but...
Very good. One, I mean, I had said that as far as the seniors go, because we do the feeding program.
I know you have to come through.
That, that we could take from twelve to three and try to do programming for seniors during that time, because that's our dead period, you know, because kids come at the end of school and the seniors leave at twelve. But we could leave them there because the van picks them up, takes them back. But also, with, as far as the part of grant goes, at the end of that grant, all those ball fields go back to the Board of Education. They do not have to let recreation go on those fields anymore. Because if your grant, if you read your grant, it says that it must remain recreation for at least twenty-five years. After that, they didn't give us the land, they let us use the land. So I, that's why I would like to see it stay where it is, because it's worked for forty-one years, that we can use their football field, we can use that, they can use ours, and it works. Yes, it's not traditional, but it works for us. Unless y'all wanna go buy all, do all recreation fields, and you go build your own and deal with it, or they go build theirs, either way, you're both gonna lose if it's not kept. To me, the way it is, where both are using it and they work together. But I, I am willing to do the senior. We already do some crafts with them. And I, and I think that before you even want to broach a senior center, we need to try stuff like that to see if we're even gonna have people come. Because a lot of senior centers just don't have, I mean, it's not worth your money to do one thing and then have five people show up. I mean, you know, that if we could just work it into what we're doing, because we do have that three-hour period, that we can do stuff with them. But that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. And I think some of us have thought about that, to have just some programs. It was never gonna be a senior center, but maybe that we could have some activities for our seniors, because we knew hunger, that meals would done like, and that we could have, you know, programs for them or crafts or whatever to, for them. It would never be a total community center. It would be just something to, more than what we have, but not an entire senior center.
Madam Chairman, we, we recognize, I'll speak to the board and I'll let y'all direct me. We, we have recognized that it will be, taking on a senior center as a new building requires new personnel, requires new overhead, new upkeep and everything. If somebody gave us a building today for a senior center, we're not prepared financially to put the staff in there to run it. So we recognize that we are so far away financially from having a true senior center. And another thing we were looking at is, you know, what can we do to provide some more activities for the people who want a senior center? Knowing that it's, it's far down the, so far down the road, we can't even see it. With binoculars, we can't even see it. So, so we've taken all those things into consideration. And, and again, that's what caused us, you know, we know that, that some seniors go over there for meals, hungry meals. And so that naturally sort of told us to look in that direction. And, and at some point, when we had enough information, we've talked about it so little, we didn't have enough to approach Ms. Yuor with. And so I'm sure we would have when we felt like we were, even had the right questions to be, to be asking. So if you'll give us a little forgiveness on that, that, that would be the correct answer from us to why we haven't approached you, but anyway.
Thank you.
Well, we, and also, part of the reason why we have predators, we don't control the community center. It's currently under the school system. And to speak back off what you said, it's my understanding we're the only, Bay's County Schools are the only school system in the state that runs a recreation department. I think that has something to do with why the school system or superintendent are ready to pass it along to the county, because that's how it's done ninety-nine other counties in the state. I don't know how a superintendent would oversee arts and crafts for seniors. That'd be hard for Dr. Williams. I'd love to hear his opinion on that, but one thing that Lulu did... um, one thing that Lulu did mention, and that's something that has been discussed, is, you know, nobody loses jobs. This, this isn't about, I think Lulu said, um, about having to reapply for the job. How, how many years you been doing this, Lulu?
Almost thirty-three.
Lulu shouldn't have to reapply at thirty-three years for a job, neither should anybody else in there. But this topic came up because of the senior center discussion and ways to save money and have other activities. We were told, I'm not sure exactly which representative of senior center made the comment yet, that the community center wouldn't work in its current capacity for a certified, um, senior center. But what it could do is, a program could be brought in there and used and utilize the space that's in there, so the county didn't have to spend money on those building. That's, that's my biggest thing is, you know, if, if we do proceed with this, no one has to reapply for the job. The county manager stated that the part of grant, um, said that they'd be willing to work so the county can operate the center as long as recreation is provided. So, county manager, you, you had confirmed that that is the case, correct?
Correct.
And there's no issues? So the next question is, where do we go from here?
Can I say one more quick thing, very quick? That the, the, I hear you keep saying, we're the only county, why is that so bad? We are small. That's why it is that way. It was built. And the county got that property because the school system gave it to them for ten dollars. And so now that everything has been developed, now, oh, we don't want to do it that way anymore. But, I mean, just because we're different, doesn't mean it doesn't work. Yeah, I mean, yes, it's different, but it does mean it doesn't work. And we walk around the high school games, the high school, we, where it gives us bills, and it, we work that way. I'm not sure when that happens, if y'all want to take it over, what's gonna happen with that? I've done it for thirty-three years, it made it work. I'm just not sure what's gonna happen. Because it really doesn't, I mean, I, I, I don't think you're looking at the big picture.
Dr. Williams, I have briefly spoken about that, and he said there would be an L U development between the two, if the community center came back under the county, for all of the fields. And that was the extent of the conversation.
So Madam Chair, so we can move on, um, do we need to direct the county manager to, to do anything specific or do something in general, or?
I would think maybe to have maybe a little bit more formal talks with the superintendent. I mean, concerning if he, if they really want to get rid of it.
And, and see how, I guess, I think one of the things that I remember seeing is with it going from a state to local government entity, um, retirement, um, maybe talk with Dr. Williams and the finance officer and, and see, you know, so no employees.
And I would think, not that we're trying to get rid of people, but I think if we did take over, and we did add a element for senior activities, we're not any closer anywhere to being certified, there would have to be some tweaking of job descriptions.
You'd have to look at the staffing model and after that's, yeah.
It would have to be tweaked to that, because it, it wouldn't match up. But, um, I think we should direct our county manager to have some talks with Dr. Williams and see, oh, what, what has been mentioned here tonight, and see what they can come up with, what, whether we stop it or can, to continue to, to explore.
Maybe give us an update, the assembly and.
Yes.
And give us.
Well, that's, that's not two weeks, I don't know, the holidays.
Well, Dr. Williams and at least two, if not three, board members, they will be gone through, I think he said, Tuesday or Wednesday at a, either a state or a national conference.
So it might be first of January.
Or, I mean, just, you know, as soon as you can, I mean, not a great date, but.
No, wait, because I'd rather have that conversation in face-to-face instead of on the telephone with them.
Right. Could we, um?
Just direct her to come back with a report at the beginning of the year.
One-on-one, good for you.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, moving on.
Just so to be clear of the direction he would like to see it go.
Yeah, ask him what the purpose of the head and Board of Education, and what our ideas were, and just see. And what Lulu says, what, what that people will take. I think that would be fair to get the three components. Okay, moving on to new business, uh, we have the approval of twenty Board of Commissioners meeting dates, and we have an update at your, at your table, uh, on the table. February meeting needed to be changed due to a conflict and, or the Board of Commissioners.
For the same personnel.
And for Personnel Board. Um, Camp, Camp will do both these approvals together. Quite is the pleasure, board. That way you can start mapping out for next year.
Madam Chair, I, quick question, I was talking to the clerk earlier, we're moving the first meeting in January to the second because of holiday. The general statute does require us to have two meetings, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we wanted to not have that meeting and just have our night meeting in January because of the holiday, we could technically do that, couldn't we?
Yes, and if you'll notice that that meeting is actually on a Wednesday night because of the holiday. So if you really want to throw everyone's calendar into it, you can pick another day altogether in January and just have one.
I think, wait, January twenty-second, since you mean the first of December is a long time away, that's almost six weeks. I think we need to move it up toward the beginning of the month. I don't say it has to be the second, because I know some people might be on vacation.
Right, and that's something else I was thinking about when I was looking at it, that's why I asked the clerk, because I knew she.
Uh, so that we could, we could go back next week, um.
Could we, um, could we have two night meetings?
Does that, lots of counties have?
Could we, why don't, why don't we look at Monday, the following Monday?
The sixth.
Would be the sixth, and do that as a night meeting?
And that'd be our only meeting during the month?
Yeah, I think it probably be.
Okay, so.
So Monday, January the sixth.
The sixth and scratch for twenty-second?
On counsel, the exclusive, second and twenty-second, in place of zero-six.
Chair, and then have that seven P M. The only thing is, that it's more difficult for Commissioner Jordan to come to night meetings. Because, uh, the horse is not here at night, but it's raining, and, um, just a thought, you know, I would think.
And that's one of the biggest things that I've heard in the last year, is why aren't all our meetings at night?
Yeah, and, and it has been, a, a lot of people have said that over the years.
Well, if it's gonna be, if we're gonna change the meeting, and I can hear what you're saying about Commissioner Jordan, but if we're gonna change the meeting, the easiest way to accommodate the most number of people is to have it, if we're gonna change it, to have it at night.
Okay, I mean, I just brought that up.
Sure, sure, I understand.
So January sixth, at seven P M. And that means personnel would be at six P M.
If there's a need, yes.
If there, if there is a need.
Madam County Manager, at what point do you think these meetings will start being nailed across the street? So that the court doesn't come into play anymore?
It could possibly be January, if, of course, we don't have to have internet to have this meeting, even though it was nice for the two of us, um.
January twenty-twenty or twenty-one?
Twenty.
You gonna leave that, go on record, say that?
But we can decide.
I've been saying it for a year already.
We, we can decide that when we get here, I mean, in December, we might have a better idea. Okay, did I hear the, uh, motion to approve the, um, schedules for twenty-twenty, Board of Commissioners and personnel, this, making the exception for January, moving a January meeting to January sixth at seven P M, and the personnel meeting at six if needed.
So move.
I second.
Say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. Um, the next one is budget amendments, Mrs. Zaitlin is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have three, uh, budget amendments to discuss tonight. Budget Amendment eleven and twelve, kind of hand in hand. The Sheriff's Department receives revenue, um, called unauthorized substance excite tax, and the more that we worked into it, we needed to create a special revenue fund and get this revenue out of the general fund, it's restricted use for the Sheriff's Department. So the budget amendment number eleven is to move, originally we had budgeted five hundred dollars under Court Awards to the law enforcement in the general fund, and we are moving that, um, five hundred dollars into the special revenue fund that was created.
Okay, those two, and then at the bottom, you have county auto expense and miscellaneous expense.
Correct, we had to balance the budget, so, um, I talked with the, um, the Sheriff's Department, and they said to go ahead and decrease that county auto expense so that we could budget that five hundred dollars in miscellaneous expense into the special revenue fund.
Why is the pleasure, board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve budget revision number eleven.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion is made and seconded, that we approved this budget amendment eleven in discussion. Here are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes four-zero.
Budget Amendment twelve is also for this special revenue fund, um, this is in, in anticipation if the Sheriff's Department collects any, um, sort of revenue for forfeitures, that is also restricted to the Sheriff's Department. So this is to, um, create a revenue line for the forfeitures and also increase that miscellaneous expense line in the special revenue fund.
Okay. Once again, why is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve budget revision number twelve, second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded in a discussion. Here are none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes four-zero.
Budget Amendment thirteen, this is to budget for funds that we have received for the, um, uh, the housing, bringing up to four sixteen and seventeen.
Okay, um, and these are my funds we have received this year.
Correct.
Um, the wise hole, four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, and all the seventy-three thousand, and then the, the expenses, the soft rehab, soft disaster recovery, hard rehab, and hard, um, rehab, two of those. And that helps to, you know, work on homes that are in badly need rehab in the county. Why is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve budget revision number thirteen.
And I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Motion is made and seconded.
Discussion.
And in discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
That kind of answer. I don't, these are odd numbers.
Yes.
Are they percentages, with their developed number?
No, sir, these are actual costs. The company, Mc, um, McDavid and Associates is handling the grant, so they charge a percentage for the soft costs. But then these are construction fees, and these are the actual construction fees for the various houses that's been assisted. So when we receive the invoice, we then turn around, uh, approve it in the requisition system with North Carolina Housing Finance Association, and they send us the money, and then we turn around and pay the invoices. So these are the actual costs, so that's why they're seven dollars.
But it ends up being flowed through?
Correct.
Okay. I'll plus to that, thank you a lot, ma'am.
Okay, I will take the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that's approved four-zero. Thank you, Mrs. Zaitlin. Okay, Personnel Forward, would like to make a recommendation.
Okay, this is to allow the Water Department to advertise for two positions, but only one person would be hired based upon the qualifications of the person who is best qualified for the job. There is the documentation that was presented to the Personnel Board, and as well as the minutes, and as you can see, the person, the Water Department has someone that will be retiring in April, and they would like to bring on a person as soon as possible, they do not have anyone in mind. But they would like to advertise that they can bring someone so cross-training can take place. When another employee retired in August of eighteen, that position was not filled. And during the course of the discussion with Personnel Board, it was recommended to advertise for utility system operator and a utilities maintenance crew leader, and then depending on who applied and which had the best qualifications, except the most highly qualified person to fill this vacant position. There's also two other people who have the potential to retire over the next two to three years. They have not said they are going to retire, but if you're looking down the road and doing long-term planning, we felt like we need to go and get someone in so they can start learning from the senior members on staff. And there is our money, excuse me, in the budget, because there is a, what's considered a balance line within the water fund, and then that money would be moved once this person is hired into this salaries position.
And as, uh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
And as I understand, uh, these money is not coming out of the general fund, this is coming out of the water fund.
Correct.
That's right.
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
Okay, a motion has been made.
I'll second.
What's your name?
What?
You want to make, you want to make a motion?
Oh, I thought you said I want to make this, I said. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I think that.
That's okay.
There must be a wall over in here.
I'll make an all motion, if I have to, thank you. Um, that we, that we, I guess, allowed the Water Department to advertise for two positions, fill in one position based on the allocated pool, based on the recommendation from the Personnel Board and the information provided by the Public Utilities Director, Mr. Hespeck.
And I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion has been properly made and seconded, uh, in a discussion.
Yes, ma'am. I think I sent an email to everybody, um, you know, we, we somewhat, I'm not gonna say we're promising, we made a statement, that we were not going to be doing any hiring and, and that we were gonna watch our money, so I, I sent, uh, just for, for the folks, I sent six bullet points to fellow commissioners why I thought this was something that we should do. And as you see the minutes, um, the clerk has over there some of what those are in the packet too, so this is a good decision. I looked up, Mr. Ram trees gone, I wanted to say for his, but this was a good decision. Just give him a hard time, you know, but anyway, um, uh, this is well follow-out decision, and, uh, Madam Chair, Natalie, I think that we all were in strong agreement on this. Not quite a bit.
Okay, you're not wanting to come in?
No.
I, I think you said it very well, and it is being proactive so that we can pass somebody on the ground ready to take over when the person walks away. Over time. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes four-zero. All those opposed, that passes 4-0. Okay, the next item is the donation of the dental office to school system.
There was an email sent that requested information about possibility donating the dental office to the school system and there is a process you have to go through. Essentially you can sell it to the school system if they would be interested for a dollar or more if that's the case, but you will need to make a decision about if you would like to have it for me to have a discussion. I did briefly speak with Dr. Williams and he said that, that's why he's not here tonight, like I said earlier, he's out of town. He said whatever you decide and then he would speak with me more about the building and he would be willing to look at the building. Now, the dental office does currently house gyms, so I did reach out to renowned guests just to give her a heads up that this was going to be on the agenda and she did say that the building, where it was located had to meet federal standards, she has that information if you need that. So we went out to find a place that the county was willing to house them, for them to be housed within the county. Based on the file folder that we have in the office, the county has housed them since at least 2003.
Say the last word.
The county has housed them in the county buildings since at least 2003. Now, I'm not sure if Ms. Truman was involved before then and if she might have other information, but that's one of the first documents that was in that folder.
And I do know that they serve 80 families per month.
Correct.
On what with food that would have, would not have existed if it wasn't for gyms. So, you know, that is a big compact each and every month on the county.
County wise.
County wise.
Very valuable.
Very valuable.
Did you send those standards?
No, she has them and I'm sure that if you ask, she could probably send them to you.
And I think Vanessa, you had asked to speak, why don't you come up and talk at this time?
That's a special award.
Yeah, I think when you, since we're talking about this subject now.
I'm reading.
Since we've had a talk earlier.
Okay, I'm Vanessa Truman, I'm affiliated with gyms, gave some emergency notice, excuse me. We just want to make sure that we're covered if we were displaced, that we had somewhere else to go because we do serve so many people. On average, I did last 10 months, we served about 76 families average each month and about 150 people each month. We just need a suitable building, you know, if you could get it for us. We preferably with a ramp, a lot of people disabled or elderly and we end up having to take food out to the car store and they can barely get in. Just asking to keep us informed, whatever decisions y'all make, a lot of planning involved, we've got a lot to build, to move. There'll be main offices, telephone shelves, food, it's just like really crowded, it's like moving your house if we did that move, so there'd be a lot of planning involved. And y'all are welcome to visit, maybe I'm old too, and we appreciate y'all talking to us.
I have been, I've been to your gyms and stacked food for you, but let me ask you, what are the square footage requirements that would you think?
I do not know that. I know we have three freezers in our refrigerator. We have five different rooms plus the office and each one of those rooms has a different type food in it. One's got the freezer and refrigerator in it, one's got what we call TCAT, which we're affiliated with the Food Bank of Alamo, they give us, it's like government food, basically what it is. We keep that separate because we have to inventory that. We've got donated food in other rooms, we've got one room, this packing room, we have the boxes packed, 20 people come in, we just take work, go in there, get stuff for them. So it's quite the square footage, do you know?
What the exact square footage is, but we have recently, we actually were not in the old, what is the true dental office until recently and I contacted Mr. Ramtree in reference to that because we just simply did not have a room to store the food that we needed in the area that we were in. Now y'all are in what used to be the doctor's office building. But you have eyed around that space.
We kind of eyed around that right now and as far as the federal guidelines, that is probably something we need to get from the Food Bank of Alamo because we are, because we receive foods from the federally funded, we have certain guidelines that we're supposed to be as to how they're stored, the temperature that it's supposed to be and that's what it is.
Could you make sure we get those? And while I was thinking though, I knew it was in the doctor's office, I was just wondering could there be a coexistence and I have them, so they didn't have them. I mean, that's.
Square footage was what, what we're hearing, square footage, something like that would be, might be hard to pull off, but you know, we were out doing the tour and we saw how the different rooms that you were using and it actually takes up like much, right much space.
But you were not in the dental ward before by the morning, were you?
We have some in the hallway and then the TCAT room where the federal food is kept is separate because Vanessa said we have to inventory that.
So you have two rooms.
How about the, don't expect, I know all of your requirements and regulations, but having just gone in the building last week or a couple of weeks ago, whenever that was, there's one room that you're using, you step out of that room into the hall and there's no, there's no door there to close off.
Okay, you're talking about going in the hall to the back rooms? No, there's no door there.
Yeah, and I would think that you might be finding, if you couldn't close it off, then somebody else on another part of the building have access to it, so that might present a, you've been able to state it in the guidelines, that's something you have to consider.
Right, there is a door between the dental office and gyms and we were not until recently using part of that dental office.
Well, if we see those regulations and then, and again, we're in the beginning phases of this, of this too, so.
And I was just thinking, there is a lot of room in that dental office as we walk through, every time you turn down the hallway, there's more rooms and all. And so I'm not sure what type of square footage that the school was looking for to even.
Did, should we mention or can we, should we mention what school might be looking at?
Why they're, why they might be considering, I think, we both can, I think somebody should say it.
Well, they're looking for alternative school, so blame me if I could spill the beans.
No, I mean that.
That's what you're trying, I always try to give you a try.
And I'll, the, when the topic came up, the one thing that has been said though is gyms, you know, where's gyms going to go? Has it been, we're kicking gyms out and put it in your house, Vanessa, or anything like that, that's one of the big thing and I know it was about a week or two ago, I talked to Ms. McGinnis about somebody being able to utilize gyms. I did, somebody did ask me this question and I didn't know the answer. The funding for gyms?
Yes, we get a lot of donations, we get what's called emergency food and shelter money periodically with, basically.
Food bank.
Yeah, we're affiliated with Food Bank of Alamo, they serve like 15 counties, Gates is one of 15 counties.
Now, also on the different type of funding on that, if we did proceed with this and the county manager has possibly presented the option of a location that could be feasible with some work, is that something that the county would have to pay for? What is the?
If you're talking about that white building, they would have to go in and look at it and see if it's even large enough. As I said, I believe in email, I've not been in that building, I don't remember how big that building actually is.
But any work that was to be done, work with funding, is that something?
To me, it would be a county building, so it would, if the county's providing the location, because they pay for their telephones currently.
We pay for telephones.
We don't have a rental agreements and it makes us responsible.
Correct.
We have all the shelves and everything we need for sale.
Right, they provide all their equipment on the shelving, we provide the space, the heat, the light and water, things like that. And there's never been a contract?
Since 2003.
Since 2003.
I think they probably had it before that, I think it started around 2001 and we were in the building of Gatesville, then the EIC building and I don't know how long before that they run there.
Been around a long time.
It started in 1986, I was not in it then.
You would say gyms have been around a long time.
Yeah, not this.
I was not affiliated.
So you buy one in Tolu on a monthly basis, we pay up and pay us, spend as much as $2,000 a month in buying food for the food bank, so we pay for more than just a penny a little. And right now, we have had a little more food coming in from the federal side of things and I think right now we're probably spending somewhere around $500 or $1,200 a month on other food items, so we, the donations that we receive do go towards more food coming in.
Everybody that works with gyms is involved, you know, nobody gets any kind of money whatsoever. And we do spend that local, that money for food local, it was in the county. But like you're saying, excuse me?
No ma'am.
I was going to say, anytime y'all want to come down there, see the, you know, areas that we'd like to show you around.
And you're open on Wednesdays?
Monday, Wednesday and Fridays from 10 to 12. We serve all the, everybody in Gates County, we can serve, have to meet certain criteria with income, it is for the low income and the Food Bank of Alamo gives us that amount. It's set up for how many people and the family.
You don't do anything different at Thanksgiving either?
No, we do have fun especially, we'd love to hand out turkey, but we just don't, we're kind of in the mercy of the government and what the Food Bank of Alamo is in donations.
Well, I believe that you all get that information back to us and we'll look around for, look at square footage as well.
Okay.
And we'll keep y'all, we'll keep dialogue going between us.
Thank you.
I certainly been out there, excuse me for interrupting you, and Rosson Baptist Church, we are very involved as well as other places, but when you said 76 families and maybe 150?
That's average.
That's average, has that been on inquiries or is it stapled?
It's probably a little bit lower now than it has been. In the past, we've done 85, 90 families at Tumpor, you know, but it's probably a little bit less now. But that was the 10-month average, let's get it figured out.
It certainly is a wonderful service for our citizens, especially those that are in the need to have a family, and that is what you do and you're all your volunteers.
And those residents that might be here certainly appreciate what all of y'all do for Food Bank too, I know we do in Gates, I know those working with, provide as well.
Okay, thank you for all.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, are we going to direct the county manager, I can give you the other item?
Excuse me?
Are we going to direct the county manager to have a conversation, since we're pretending to see if they're even interested in the building before, I mean, if they say they're not interested in the building?
Oh yeah.
Then they don't have to worry about.
Five and a half square.
Right, yes ma'am.
Okay, is it agreeable to the board that we direct the county manager to discuss or with the superintendent on the dental office and see if they're interested? If not, is that a new point, nobody doing any changes?
Right.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded in discussion. Here are none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
Will this be the building as is because there are need, there is work, okay.
Okay, Mrs. Pittman has put on our table, if the 2020 census, Complete County Committee progress report, please read that. Would you like for us to read it aye or would you like to do it? Okay. 2020 census is coming up next year, have it ever used since 1890.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And as everybody knows, the census is critical to the county in terms of money coming in for social services, the schools, so it's very important that we get a complete and accurate count. At this point, as the chair, I have made contact with the partnership specialist for the Alamo region, Mr. Derek Dorazio, and I've been through the preliminary training. Contact with various stakeholders has been initiated. The Board of Education has appointed Sally Ryan to the Complete Camp Committee and one of the things about the Complete Camp Committee is this is a new thing, this has not been done in the past, but the federal government's trying to look for ways to engage the public and get them involved in participating in the census. Connie Wolfrey with the Community Center is on board, DSS has responded, they're supposed to give us an answer next week if our participation, spoke to Pat, Ms. Pat at the library.
The bar.
Did I spell, don't mind me. She's on board.
I got to the library, but I had those.
Whatever I was looking at, I was looking at it wrong. Mr. I was, I was screwing up Mr. Winslow's first name last night, she's on board and I, apparently we need to get any other political entities within the county involved and that's of course the town of Gatesville, so I've contacted Mr. Winslow, I haven't heard back from him yet, but I'm sure I will. We're still working on gathering other stakeholders that the partnership specialist asked about, mostly churches, since we don't really have just one comparative church group, trying to get with some people and see what we can get together. So if we can get everyone on board in time, we'll meet at the Community Center late in the afternoon on December 3rd for a two-hour training session. In the meantime, one of the things that's going on is that they're looking for people to work the census. So I started disseminating employment materials today, I'm going to be visiting stores and businesses that deal with the public around the county over the next week or so, asking them to post the job opportunities for the census. I'm also hoping that the county offices will please do this, so I'm planning to stop in and ask them to do that tomorrow. And Mr. Dorazio is being kept updated, I have data on the status as of today and that's where we're at right now. We are rather behind other counties, so I'm hoping that we'll be able to catch up pretty quick. I know the DSS already does have some information on job opportunities, so I'm hoping that we can get them to give that out and I'll have a couple of yours on, so I hope I'll put one out in front of DSS and maybe down here out in front of the county offices, if that's okay, and I'll do that tomorrow and hopefully we can get things started so we can get ourselves a complete and accurate count.
Sounds like you offer a good start.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, is any other new business to be discussed? Okay, citizens comments? Okay. Milton Carter. Mr. Carter, please give us your opinion on this.
Milton Carter, 1503 and C32 South, House of Bill. Oh, I'm glad I waited and listened because for one thing, I don't think y'all should mess with the Community Center, I don't think that the city government is in business of, you know, sports and crafts and things like that. I agree with, with Nizulu that, you know, things that it's working now and rather than have some kind of cost later on on this, to leave alone and other things too, but the story about gyms here, they've had to move several times here, you know, and that cost to move, they moved out of the old schoolhouse over here and they moved to where they're at now, I think maybe you should leave them alone as well, they do a great service for our community. And if I remember correctly, when Dr. Williams was selling. Uh, and if I remember correctly, when Dr. Williams was selling out a school, the new school building, he said he wanted to put an alternative school there at Central Middle. Uh, I don't know what he has in mind for, you know, the, the gym building, but, um, I just think that, uh, it's gonna cost y'all more. You know, if you, if you give that building to the school system. He's gonna come at y'all, you know, with his poker face on, saying, I need more money. You know?
They have no money, we do.
Pardon? But, uh, but, uh, you know, I, I just think that, um, and then y'all say you don't have any money. And maybe, you know, if you just table it for a while, that, uh, maybe do something a little different later on. You know, with the senior citizens, when you can actually afford to do something. I mean, you know, and then another thing, the quarter or percent sales tax that y'all wanna do. You're just, you know, you're not like the citizens again. If you wanna generate some money, put some businesses here and try to generate some money. Put jack in the taxes, you're killing us. And that's about it.
I always appreciate your comments.
Thank you for hearing me.
You understand when you go to the pastor's camp, you're already paying that quarter, you know?
Yeah, but, um, Pastor Tate County is receiving the money though.
Yeah, I, I mean, but you're paying, you're not the same thing here.
If I'm gonna suffer for groceries from Walmart, then I'm paying Virginia that tax, you know?
That's true.
So, you know, we got twelve or sixteen cents this year, something like that, I forget what the number of those. In taxes and real estate and this and that, now you're going up a quarter percent on a sales tax. How deep in my pocket do you wanna go? I got pennies left there, just pennies. You know, so.
I'm here for all of y'all.
Yes, ma'am, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, anyone else have, would like to come to the podium? What?
I said, is everybody coming?
Oh, sure.
I could give up more than that.
You get exercise.
I had that this morning, that's why I came home tonight. Um, one of my favorite subjects came up tonight, Jack. And, and you, the responses aboard you and everybody else is, uh, the senior citizens. I am, without a doubt, the oldest rat in this room. And I can, at seven to seven years old and a bad heart, can live without a senior citizen, so. But if one comment was made, and I'm not sure who made it, it was in exchange with loot, but how many people are gonna use it? And my number one thing to say real quickly is, the word community center keeps coming up, so I guess that's what we still officially call it. Well, you know where it come from? You know why we had it? You were a little girl who ain't counted, London may remember. Congressman Waller Jones Senior had that built and gave it to Gates County. And it was a community center. It was being used by youth and old people too. That building was not built just for, but used to play basketball in. And I feel like we don't know how many people are gonna show up. You know, today with television and computers, um, the older people, uh, nearly all of them are entertained. They can probably tell you every ad on Dish Network. So, in my, it sounds like Milton's talking, but in my opinion, I can't, whether y'all take it or keep it, what, I don't care what you do with it. What I do, you know, want to see, don't want to see, with this budget crisis, and I had put this on the internet, and Jonathan, I'll put it on there again, anybody that walks in this room with a new mon, a program that needs money, tell them we don't have no money, when we get some money, come back. And that's my speech for the night.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, Commissioner's comments. Mr. Art, with Commissioner Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Pleased to see everyone here, uh, even more pleased to see that, uh, each and every one of you certainly that express your concerns to us and bring up ideas to us that, uh, that you're here, or at least have sent us some messages. And we do, uh, we do pay attention to those, each and every one of them. We put them in a, at least I do, put them in a jar, and then pull them out and mark them as to how many. If I only have four or five going one way and none the other, then that's essentially how I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna vote for me, I'm gonna vote for you. And they are the things that we keep in mind. Uh, we've certainly heard from citizens, uh, involved in the senior citizens program, if you will, for years. Uh, we've also, uh, weighed and looked at the budget crisis, I'll call. And as, uh, Mr. Ryan was mentioning, we realize it's a mistake. And mistakes are made as brought forward. And we want to correct those mistakes the best way we can, and the only way we can is to address them and then find out and not make those mistakes again. If we do, then we do the very same thing again, we address them, we make them right, and we do the best. And we help each other out. Uh, the good thing about Gates County, the good thing about people here in this county is that love that one another express for each other. So, with that, I appreciate you being here, and I appreciate your concerns, so thank you.
Commissioner, um, James?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, I hate to, well, I don't hate to quote him, but he's, um, seventy-seven years old, so he deserves quoting you every once in a while.
Forget the old rap part.
The old rap, I'm not gonna call him a rap, but, you know, he, he said a lot tonight, like usual. Um, but he, he said one thing that I wrote down in, in Star, he says, he wants what's best for the county. And I think all of us up here want what's best for the county. So, that's decisions that we have to make, what we think, or what we want, um, is what's best for the county going forward, being proactive, as, as someone said earlier. Um, the couple of decisions that were made tonight, a couple items on the agenda, it's not to take away from anything, it's to make things better. Um, the gyms, we're not kicking gyms out, you know, it's a, it's a great service that it offers the citizens. Uh, but the dental clinic, the county manager, it was, it's been up for sale for a while, it was marketed to dental students in, in Greenwood. So, it's, you know, instead of going to somebody else, if, if we had gotten rid of that to a dentist, we'd been in the same boat. Uh, now, it's in a different boat because the school system is interested in it. Um, so hang, hang with us, um, there's some decisions that are gonna be made based off of some research, but gyms is staying in the county, the community center is staying in the county, and maybe there's better ways to do things out there, don't know, can't, you don't know unless you get into the weeds of it. Um, thank you to Ms. Pittman, um, for the Complete Count Committee, you're doing a great job. Whoever nominated you, I commend that person. Um, this Friday night, football team's playing in the playoffs in North Duplin, second round of the playoffs, and I saw the band is going, um, the band will be.
It's Pamlico.
Pamlico, Pamlico, we beat North Duplin. Earl, you're gonna go to North Duplin. You're go, you're going to North Duplin, let's see how it goes. They're playing in Pamlico, they beat us last year, hopefully they won't beat us this year. Gates County native was coaching last year, and he's moved on to Newberry High School, but I saw that the band will be going. Um, I, I think that that's one good thing that has come up over the last few months, is the high school band has been in a lot of competitions, has done really good. The football team has, has had a good season. There was an athlete from the high school that just went to the state cross-country meet and, and represented Gates County really well. Um, so there are some good things that, that have come up and are going to Gates County. And I was, I was in a conversation with someone, it's been a couple weeks ago, and this person made a statement. We need to be Team Gates. We need to be as one, we don't need to be against each other. And you're gonna hear me saying that, that phrase, Team Gates, a lot going forward. Because we're not in competition with other people in the county, we're one county. We're all friends and neighbors, um, some of us may agree to disagree at some point, and, and that's okay. As long as everybody's opinion is heard, um, and you take it with respect. So, you're gonna hear me here saying that statement, Team Gates, a lot going forward. Um, cause I, I really liked it when, when it came up in the conversation. But thank you to everybody that came tonight, and please keep calling us or emailing us, um, or stopping us at the post office with any questions or comments that you do have.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna let you be last.
Alright.
Um, okay, so we hope our football team has success on Friday night. I understand that quarterback that's so good last year from Pamlico has either gone to college, or he followed the coach to Newberry, where he went. And some of the whole major portions of that team has sprang away, so hopefully, we have a better chance this year. They were tremendous last year. Um, I want to confess that we made a mistake last month, last time we met. We adjourned, and then we all went on tour of county buildings. And since all of us went, that was still a meeting, and we had adjourned, and we should not have. So, I don't know how, how we rectify that, but, um, we didn't do anything but illegal, but we went to buildings and looked as a, as a group, and we should have not adjourned.
Right, technical confessions.
Yeah, so I warn you, we didn't do it, we weren't trying to be sneaky or anything, it was just, I, like, we decided I was good. And so that was, so I want to make my confession, we made a mistake, we did adjourn, and we should not have. Um, thank you for coming. As we approach the Thanksgiving holidays, I hope each of you and your families have, uh, have a nice Thanksgiving, and thank those who are less fortunate, as gyms has done, make it a better holiday for them. And if there's a neighbor or someone, you know, we're thankful for them as well. It is a time that we have a lot to be thankful for. We have some tough issues that we are confronted with, um, but we'll get through those. Uh, we're gonna have to do some lean years in here with the budget, uh, but we can learn, live with less. Uh, and we will get through it together. Um, like I say, have a happy Thanksgiving, we'll, we'll be seeing you at the first of December. And the December meeting is on the first Monday of the month by General Staff.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Well. Commissioner Freeman, uh, stopped a little bit, and I found her, and Jonathan did the same thing. Uh, Commissioner Freeman said something about, uh, us loving one another.
I raised your knife.
He raised his knife, okay. And then, um, Mr. Jones said something about Team Gates. And I had already written down, uh, something about division. You know, there's a great divide in the United States of America tonight. And that division, I think I mentioned this a couple meetings ago, concerned me then, concerns me today. We are a small community, and a small community can be divided too, but it didn't happen there. Also wrote down here, uh, I started calling Ms. Yule, Ms. Yules, I'll stick with you, we all know who I'm talking about. But anyway, you know, when we make the com, she made the comment, followed the up comment that, uh, I believe that I made, about the, we're the only county that does it this way, or whatever, and she said, that's not bad, and she, that is true. You know, sometimes you can be the only one and, and, and it be the best of the best. So, um, I certainly don't see it that way, but as a matter of fact, I, I take offense sometimes when we compare ourselves to other counties. I don't necessarily wanna follow, uh, follow other counties, I wanna believe the other counties look at us. But, um, but division is something that, uh, if it takes root, it can do a lot of damage. And as citizens and neighbors and friends in Gates County, um, I hope we never let that type of division that I see on the television, you know, about our nation, come into the county. So, I wanna encourage everyone, um, you know, don't believe everything you see, don't believe everything you hear. Commissioner Freeman said he's gonna follow what he hears, the voice of people. Say, so come and say what you believe, and we won't take offense to it, we'll jot it down. Milton, every time somebody says something, I will write it down, whatever the topic is, I will write it down always. And, um, and I don't throw it away, I hold on to it. So, um, we are here not to be a dividing team, we are here to be a building team, uh, Team Gates. And, um, and we're gonna encourage you to come back, have a great Thanksgiving.
If, if I may, November the twenty-seventh, I was looking at the time, cause I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna give the wrong time. Community Center is having a lunch. Or is it, or is it this Wednesday?
Yes, it's.
The twenty-seventh is the day before Thanksgiving, so.
Twenty-seventh.
But do you remember what time, is it twelve?
It's twelveish.
That's what I was thinking, I was trying to, but it's not wanting to pull up, so.
Something they've done.
They've done it for many years.
For the community, right?
Correct. Thanksgiving lunch. And they were still, it, it won't pull up, so I apologize, but they were still looking the other day for some volunteers or food. So, if you are interested, contact Luke at the Community Center.
Okay, um, thank you for all your comments, and thank you to the citizens for coming tonight. Um, at this time, we're going to go into closed session, session pursuant to North Carolina General Staff at one four-three, dash three-one-eight, eleven on real estate and personal yield. Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute break while we clear the room, and, um, we need a motion to go to closed session.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair.
Motion to make.
I'll say it, my buddy.
Second, do I have a discussion? Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a motion, come out of closed session.
So, both of them, Madam Chairman?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made, proper second in a discussion. Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll add a term, oh, I think we have, you want to read the minutes? I thought you were going.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll turn them over to her.
Yeah, I'll make a motion with your turn, Madam Chair.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, I know there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.